Glendale City Council Meeting. If you would like to comment on any item on the agenda, please fill out a gold speaker card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name when it's your turn to speak, and you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members: Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mounner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of September 27, 2022. This meeting is called to order. Roll call is not going to be necessary because everybody's present, so if you would take note, I would appreciate it. Our next two items on our agenda are going to be the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is going to be delivered by Pastor David Clark of the Grace Evangelical, yeah Lutheran Church and School. I'm sorry, David, where are you? Oh, you're up there. Okay, sir. So if everybody would go ahead and stand, gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if you remove it, and then please remain standing afterwards for our Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to start off by just saying good evening to the mayor and the council members. As I said, my name is David Clark. I serve Grace Lutheran Church and School here in the beating heart of Glendale, just a few blocks from here, and I have served them for 31 years. It's a privilege to be here this evening. A quick reading from 1 John, Chapter 4. Dear friends, let us love one another, for love comes from God. Everyone who loves has been born of God and knows God. Whoever does not love does not know God, because God is love. Let us pray. Almighty God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, of whom is all rule and authority in the world, we come before you with a prayer for our government. We are grateful for the good government that you have ordained to rule in our land. You have blessed our country and our people. Dear Lord, we pray that you, who are in authority in our land with wisdom and understanding, continue to encourage love, righteousness, and peace among us, that under the leadership of our community, these may continue to enjoy your grace and favor. Help us by your spirit as good citizens to give our government the things which belong to the government, and not to forget that we must give you, our God, what also belongs to you. We ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If everyone, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, sir. Sometimes you just can't say evangelical. Yeah, can't do it. Can't do it. And we're not going to try. Okay, with that said, can I get an approval of our minutes? That would be the September 2022, September 13 to 2022 voting minutes.
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Hughes, second, and Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a... Okay, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Here guys have it, do you have it? That motion passes. Yeah, seem like we're just out of sync for, I don't know why. Okay, boards and commissions and other bodies. We'll now move on to that. Before I do that, I do want to find out, I was supposed to have Mayor Orsborn in our audience. Are you here tonight? He's not here. Okay, so Dan Cotterman, City of Buckeye, you're not here either. Okay, all right. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to our appointments to boards, commissions, and other bodies. Then we'll move on to the proclamations and awards. Ms. Bauer, would you read item 3?
Approve recommended appointments to boards, commissions, and other bodies.
Mr. Turner.
Mayor, I move we...
Turn your speaker around, sir.
Mayor.
Perfect.
I move we appoint Helena Johnson Bodine to the Citizens Bond Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2022.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Here guys have it, do you have it? That does pass. I'm going to come down to the podium, and then, are you here tonight, Helena?
She's here.
Perfect. Okay, I'll come down, we'll get you sworn in, and then we'll move on Okay, so I was just asking if Mayor Orsborn was here, and he just walked in. So, Mayor of our city of Buckeye to our west, and the city manager, let's give him a warm welcome from the city of Glendale. Okay, that's not you. So, you don't have to read this, just repeat it. Okay, so boards and commissions, state aye, state your name.
I, Helena Johnson Bodine.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Give her a round of applause, folks. We do have proclamations today declaring October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Glendale. And that's why I'm wearing purple, and all of our council up there is wearing purple. If you can't see it, they're wearing it, I promise you. She's not listening to me. With that said, we'll be joined by Terry Couch of Costa Vida Mexican Grill, along with his family. Terry's been very generous in working with our police department by donating to the Glendale Victims Assistant Unit to help victims and their families. Come on, come on around here. Yeah. Okay, you got to stand right here. You can't smile. Oh, man. Okay. Proclamation, City of Glendale. Whereas the Bureau of Justice Statistics indicates that at least 1 in 6 homicide victims, and nearly half of all female homicide victims nationally, are killed by a current or former intimate partner. Whereas 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men in the United States have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner, as reported by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence. And whereas the Glendale Police Family Violence Detectives investigated over 1,350 cases of domestic violence for the year 2021. And whereas domestic violence impacts everyone regardless of race, sex, economic background, occupation, or religious beliefs. And whereas Glendale joins with others across the state of Arizona and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and their survivors, and advocates organizations who serve them in holding offenders accountable in the city of Glendale. Whereas each year, October provides an opportunity for all of us to recommit ourselves to support the development of healthy, respectful, and nonviolent relationships, reducing the occurrence of domestic violence to prevent its harmful, long-lasting effects in our community. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon the citizens of Glendale to increase their understanding of domestic violence and be supportive of their family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers who may be a victim of domestic violence. And it was signed by myself, 27th day of September 2022, and our chief clerk. I'm going to let you hold this, and your dad's going to come up here and talk. So you just kind of make it look real official like that.
Cover your face.
Sir?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, for thinking of us for the proclamation. And on all, we'll see when we got the call, it really, when we started thinking about it, my wife and I, we just really do the events, and we just listen to the community. So really, the magic is the community coming together and really making it all happen. We're just kind of there to be there and support. So thank you so much for thinking of us.
All right. All right. Want to get a picture of them? All right. Why don't you step up front, and we'll get a picture real quick. Okay, and we do have one thing here that nobody knows about, other than my assistant and myself. I received an email just, literally just about three days ago, and I'm very pleased to announce that the City of Glendale and the executive staff has been recognized for their excellence in preparing the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2021. What that means is this has qualified Glendale to receive a Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Its also attained, attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. When a certificate of achievement's awarded, an award of financial reporting achievement, it's also earned by the staff for their excellent work. So I'd like to recognize tonight, and she didn't know about this, our Assistant City Manager Vicki Rios for her leadership in this effort, and her entire team, because I know she doesn't do it by herself. And I'd like, I'd like her to receive this plaque. And now I understand that she got into a minor altercation with the sidewalk or something. Is she here?
Yeah.
Where she at? Oh, okay. And so we were having doubts whether we was going to ask her to come up here in front of everybody, because she kind of got beat up. But you know what? She does such outstanding work, I had to do it, Vicki. I hope you're not mad at me.
Thank you. Thank you. That's awesome.
So we're very, very proud of Vicki, very proud of her team. And one of the other parts of that is we had struggled with whether our city manager should be part of that. But I do know that our city manager is not a man that does his work for awards or anything else. He supports his team, and he's got a great team. And so, Kevin, thank you for for doing what you did to give them the tools that they need. So I think I'm done down Okay, so we can get rolling here now. Consent agenda. We'll move through to our consent agenda, items 4 through 16. Items on the consent agenda, they're typically of routine nature, or have been previously studied by this council at a workshop session. Now they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Have we any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Perfect. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 4 through 16?
Yes, sir. I move we pass and adopt consent agenda items 4 through 16.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second, and Councilmember Hugh to approve consent agenda items 4 through 16. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here guys have it, do you have it, that motion carries. Moving on to consent resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you read consent resolutions, items 17 through 24 by number and title?
Item 17, resolution number R 22-91, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a grant agreement, number HT 222922A, with the City of Tucson, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program Grant Award in the approximate amount of $113,000 for personnel expenses for Glendale Police Department participation in the West Valley Drug Enforcement Task Force. Item 18, resolution number R 22-92, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract, number 2023-405H-004, with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $55,000 for personnel services, employee-related expenses, and materials and supplies for the Glendale Police Department Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Enforcement Project. Item 19, resolution number R 22-93, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract, number 2023-PTS-026, with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $64,045 for personnel services, employee-related expenses, and materials and supplies for the Glendale Police Department Step Enforcement Project. Item 20, resolution number R 22-94, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract, number 2023-405D-018, with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $77,750 for personnel services and employee-related expenses and materials and supplies for the Glendale Police Department DUI Impaired Driving Enforcement Project. Item 21, resolution number R 22-95, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Fountain Hills for the use of the tax application for access and the ability to interact with statewide tax data provided by the Department of Revenue. Item 22, resolution number R 22-96, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Peoria for the use of the tax application for access and the ability to interact with statewide tax data provided by the Department of Revenue. Item 23, resolution number R 22-97, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of understanding to support the planning, design, permitting, construction, and operation of the SRPCAP Interconnection Facility among Salt River Valley Water Users Association, Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District, Central Arizona Water Conservation District, and participating entities. Item 24, resolution number R 22-98, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a grant pass-through agreement with the City of Phoenix for the purpose of providing transit service. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Perfect. Can I get a motion to approve items 17 through 24 on the consent resolutions agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve consent resolutions 17 through 24.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second, and Vice Mayor to approve items 17 through 24 consent resolutions agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here guys have it, do you have it, that motion carries. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 25, please? 25.
Award of IFB 22-36, and authorization to enter into an agreement with United Rotary Brush Corporation for the purchase of Street Sweeper brooms. And there are no speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Questions from the council? No questions? Can I get a motion to approve item 25?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item 25 on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second, and Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I explain my vote.
Please do.
As usual. This is a five-year contract. It does not provide continuity for council to review, so I will be voting no on this one and the subsequent item. So I vote nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 26, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Diamond Ridge Development Corporation for trade services. There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 26?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve item 26.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second, and Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 27, please?
Authorization to enter into Amendment Number 3 to agreement between City of Glendale, Arizona, and Motorola Solutions, Inc., for P1 CAD and RMS Command Central Jail Maintenance Command Central Aware Subscription and Vigilant LPR Cameras Motorola Solutions Agreement Number AZP19P104A. There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 27?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into Amendment Number 3 to the described agreement between Glendale and Motorola Solutions.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second, from the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to land development actions. Item 28 has been removed. We will not be hearing that. So we're going to be going on to item 29. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce that one, please?
AN 240 Cotton 303 Industrial Annexation located at the northeast corner of 173rd Avenue and Olive Avenue, public hearing.
Tell me when you're ready.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Here to provide the staff report on several land use items will be our Planning Manager, Tabitha Perry.
All right. Public hearing is now open on item 29. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you this evening is the blank petition for annexation AN 240 identified as Cotton 303 Industrial PAD. The subject property is approximately 65 acres in size, and it's located at the northeast corner of 173rd and Olive Avenues. The property is currently in the county with the zoning classification of RU43. Upon the annexation, the city would apply the most liked zoning classification, which would be A1 agricultural. The general plan land use designation currently is listed as for low-density residential, low-density residential at 2 and 1/2 per acre. The applicant is proposing a minor general plan amendment to rezone the, to change the land use designation to regional mixed use, as well as a rezoning to the PAD to allow for 1 million square feet of industrial development. Here is a annexation map just depicting the subject property in comparison to other city properties that are within the city limits. Okay. Here is an area map just for context of surrounding properties around the subject property. The item was workshop, at a city council workshop on August 23. Staff and the applicant heard input from council. The applicant has been working diligently to address some of the concerns that they have heard from the surrounding property owners. This evening, Mayor and council, this is for the blank petition on the annexation only. An opportunity to receive citizen input. It does not require an action for council on the annexation tonight. There is tentatively a future date for the annexation to occur on November 22 or December 13, as it relates to the minor general plan, as well as the rezoning application. Tentatively, those application will be presented before Planning Commission on October 27, or possibly November 10, followed by the annexation, general plan, and rezoning being presented before council on November 22 or December 13. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and I just want to repeat what you said. There is no action from the council tonight.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Okay, I just want the audience to hear that, in case they were afraid there was going to be a vote tonight. There will not be a vote tonight. Okay, questions from the council? No questions from the council. I do have a few speaker cards. So, folks, I'm going to ask you, when you come up, state your name loud and clear. You have three minutes to speak. With that, if you do not live in the city of Glendale, then just give us a rough crossroads of where you live. We're going to start off with Steve Woest. I hope I pronounced that right?
Close enough.
Okay, and then after him will be Timothy Lasota. If you'd be ready to go after Mr. Woest finished, please. And then there's three lights in front of you, sir. When that turns yellow, you're almost out of time. When it turns red, you're finished. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me, folks. So, my name is Steve Westy. I live on 173rd Avenue, in between Olive and Peoria Avenue. This is a residential neighborhood. We have, my wife and I, four generations, from my elderly mother, to my wife and I, to one of our daughters, and our two grandkids, two and five years old that live with us. And the problem is, the annexation leading into industrial on a residential road just doesn't make sense as far as our community is concerned. And I'm sure anybody here can, can understand that. So I'm just asking, and support from everybody from Waddell. Yeah. Yeah. While everybody here opposes it, there's not one person in our community that's for this. I mean, obviously, it's business, and there is a place for industrial warehousing. There is a place for semi trucks. And, you know, the industrial proposal is over 200 docking bays for semi trucks, but it's just not literally on this residential road. So anyway, thank you, folks, for listening.
Thank you, sir. Tim Lasota, you're up next. After you would be Ellen Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Timothy Lasota. I live just down Glendale Avenue at Central in Glendale. I'm here on behalf of the 200 Co-op, which is a group of homeowners in the Waddell area, right next to this would-be project that would be greatly affected. And our, obviously, we're not asking you tonight to oppose this, but this may be the only chance that folks have to weigh in on the annexation, because a public hearing is actually required tonight. So this thing seems to be all of a sudden working at light speed, and what we keep hearing is we're working on it, we're working on it. I just want to read a line from the actual report that the applicant has done, and it says, our two, this is from last month, but this is about the only thing that's available in the packet. "Our team has spent significant time during the past month working on project research and determining the infrastructure requirements for the site." Well, so this is going to go to Planning Commission apparently next month, and to council the month after that. Maybe it'll be December, maybe November, but certainly very quickly. And we're still kind of in research phase about what kind of infrastructure needs we're going to have for a 1 million square foot industrial development. Well, I can just tell you, when I went out to the site the other evening to meet with my clients, the longest, it took me about 10 minutes to get through the last mile of my trip. They're just right over, just west of Cotton Lane, and, and just off of Peoria. So I, I think that this thing is moving with such speed. That's why everyone's here tonight, because we're going to have, obviously, we'll have this, and then there'll be a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing that happens before the annexation, and then there'll be this council deciding. the annexation, and then there'll be this council deciding, do we grant this massive upzoning, and do we accede to the annexation? So, I, I think that this is not a good project for the area. It, it's just, it's, it's way too big for what's there. You'll hear Bob Branch talk about the Olive Avenue scenic corridor, that this would greatly disrupt. So, and the bottom line here is that if you're going to annex something, you're supposed to have a plan for infrastructure. You know, how are we going to get the infrastructure that we need for this project, for its needs, the services, everything? And we're being told we're working on it. So, now, I know you, you don't have to have that plan in place tonight, but you would have to have it in place by statute if you do decide to annex. And I, I think it's, it's a bad project for sure, for this area, but it's simply, the speed that it's being rushed through, I think, is also highly inappropriate. Essentially, there's, there's very little available, and it's apparently got to go forward within the next month or so. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Ellen Erickson? Okay. And then after him, Jim Hagdorn will be up next, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ellen Erickson. I live at Cotton, Cotton Lane and Olive, just southeast corner of that. I wish to try to paint a picture for the city council. I trained, I painted a picture to the city council a couple of years ago about the Loves Truck Center, so I'm back here again trying to protect my neighborhood. The, I want to express the deepest concern I have about the traffic that's going to be there on Cotton and Olive, as well as Peoria and Cotton. We have a new school on Olive Avenue, just a little west of the proposed annex warehouse. We also have an intersection at Peoria on the northwest corner. They're putting in a brand-new shopping center there, a Safeway and string of stores. The traffic already on Peoria, Cotton, and Olive is horrendous during the school year, morning and afternoon. We're going to add more 18-wheelers coming into a warehouse that faces brand-new, brand-new homes on, Meritage Homes, as well as the homes on 173rd Avenue. And you add to that via annexation what Glendale has done, along Cotton Lane, annexing anything they can get their hands on east of Cotton Lane to put in a dozen more warehouses. We're going to be nothing but a 18-wheeler truck paradise. Our neighborhood, the neighborhoods around there are going to be inundated with 18-wheelers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Maybe we get Christmas off. I just want the, want you to know, I know you're not going to take any action tonight, but this is going to be a very, very horrendous situation traffic-wise. The, the, the traffic plan has to be put in before the Planning Commission, in my opinion, takes a look at annexing this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Hagdorn? And Bob Branch, you're up next, if you'd be ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jim Hagdorn, and I live at 17750 West Cheryl Drive. Most of my property is in the county, but two parcels are in Glendale. I am against the rezoning as a taxpayer and resident of the Fertizona property, because we went through a lot of problems when the Glendale rezoned the property in front of our house to build homes, lots of them, and it's still scarred, moonscape, and void of vegetation, looks like crap. If you want accolades for your building approvals, just look at the, look at the pyramids you've already have approved. The 101 in Glendale, State Farm, and the hockey rink, or the smaller parcels along 303 that are mostly empty. I have two suggestions. Rezone the areas of Arrowhead Ranch, so that on your way home, you can see what we would see, nothing but concrete and hot temperatures. Or rezone the area between 59th Avenue and 67th Avenue, between Glendale and Bethany, and then you can see your pyramids every day when you go to work. You would also have less crime. I lived in that area for 20 years, and although I don't expect everything to always be the same, it takes a lot of nerve to come in and on the pretense that being a city, you can just rezone property without taking in considerations of the current longtime residents, and in my case, a taxpayer. I will fight any land evaluations every year because of the value will only go down. I have two, have the guts to maintain a green space instead of a high-rise pyramids. There is no fire. There, it takes three hours on average for a cop to come out to the property. It's only going to get worse. Glendale has nothing. I only saw one cop car, only because I heard that Glendale has Olive, and I stopped them, and I asked him if everything was all right. And he says, "Why?" And I said, "Well, we don't see cops in this area, especially from Glendale." He said, "Well, they sent me out here to look at this car." But there's no infrastructure, there's no cops out there, and it's, and it's getting worse. And it's, it's time that, we have to stop some stuff. And, and it starts, it started really with, with my property in front of my house, because I thought it was going to be a slam dunk, and it's not. And it's, no one's taken credit for fixing it, and it just seems like it's just vacant, everything, and I don't want that property to just be a vacant piece of property, all muddled up, when it was a very good farm, rose garden. And I just, any questions?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Branch.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Dr. Bob Branch. I'm the Commissioner of Park and Recreation for Maricopa County District Four, which includes White Tank Mountain, but I'm also a citizen out in Waddell at basically Cortez and Olive. In 2000, I want to make you aware of something called the Olive Scenic Corridor, because this is relevant, because Parks started to have meetings with this, excuse me, with the county in Glendale and all the other stakeholders in 2004, to preserve the corridor from the 303 all the way to the White Tank Mountain. This is, has been adopted. This is in Maricopa County's long-term plans, and if you look at the 2020 Maricopa Long Care Plans and look at scenic corridors, you'll see that what they're proposing is being built in that scenic corridor. The idea was, in 2004, 2005, then later in 2012 and 14, when we looked at planning, and we included the city of Glendale, but also Buckeye, Surprise, Peoria, Litchfield Park and Goodyear. Everybody was, all the stakeholders were there. We decided that from the 303 to the White Tank Mountain, that whole corridor there would be a scenic corridor. Now, if you look, we've also adopted in the plan for the Maricopa County, in their long-term plan, what can and cannot be built there. So the residents that live there are under the illusion that we're under that plan. Nothing over a two-story building can be, can be built there. Nothing can block the view of that mountain from the corridor. Now, Parks has fought to have an on-ramp and off-ramp built at Olive and the 303, knowing that when schools and our visitors come to our park, they'll come off and they'll just look at the beautiful mountain and drive up. That's what all the residents are there, and they understand that. This is a scenic corridor, and when I was told that this was being built, it was like, it can't be built. We've already decided this matter. All of the stakeholders, including Glendale, have been in these meetings, planning meetings, that what's going to happen around the White Tank? Because you understand that the White Tank Mountain is one of the jewels in our county, right? And this is leading right to the White Tank Mountain, right at Olive and Cotton, right there. And do we really want to turn it into a warehouse facility? And the answer is no. I don't think any of the citizens here want that. That's not what we built.
Your time's up, sir.
I want to thank you very much again for your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah. Not proper forum clapping here, sorry. Okay. So, we have all our speakers done. Is there anyone else that needs to fill out a card? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to item 34, companion to item 30, Ms. Bauer.
Item 34, ordinance number O 22-62, in ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona revised statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located at the southwest corner of Northern Parkway and Dyce Art Road, consisting of approximately 133 acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 241, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Public hearing.
Public hearing is now open on item number 34, ordinance 022-62.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is an annexation for adoption, Annexation 241, known as the Northern Parkway Commerce Center. The blank petition was heard before council on August the 23rd. During that public hearing process...
Tabitha, wait a second. Tabitha had requested that we take this item, which is a companion to 30, which is why it's out of order. We'll get back to the other ones. Please continue.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, when the item was brought before council for the blank petition on August the 23rd, there were no opposition to the annexation proposal. The property is approximately 133 acres in size, and it's located at the southwest corner of Northern Parkway and Dyce Art Road. It is currently in the county with residential zoning, and the cities like zoning would be RR 45, which will also allow for residential zoning. Next on the agenda is the applicant's proposal to rezone the property from the RR 45 zoning district to PAD planned area development to allow for an industrial development. Here's the annexation map to give context to the subject site in comparison to other property that has been annexed into the city limits. And with that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Adam, come here for a second. All right. Any questions from the council? No? I don't have any speaker cards on this item. Anyone needing to speak on this item? No? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 34, ordinance 022-62? Where'd you go?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I move we adopt ordinance O 22-62. Waiting beyond the title.
Second.
Okay. A motion from, from...
Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Turner. I also have a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries unanimous. Okay. Now, we're going to go back to item 30.
Ordinance number O 22-58, in ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning approximately 134 acres located at the southwest corner of Northern Parkway and Dyce Art Road, from RR 45 Rural Residential to PAD Planned Area Development, for a development plan entitled Northern Parkway Commerce Center, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on item number 30, ordinance 022-58.
Mayor and council, once again, this is the companion application, rezoning application to the annexation adoption that council just approved. The request is to rezone approximately 134 acres from RR 45 to PAD Planned Area Development. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Northern Parkway and Dyce Art Road, which is approximately nine miles from City Hall. Here is an area map to give context to the subject property and surrounding end users. To the west, you will see that there's a nursery, a wholesale nursery, and to the south is Luke Air Force Base housing. The applicant is proposing land uses that are allowed within the industrial zoning districts, which would be your light industrial and your heavy industrial, as well as limited commercial land uses that are comparable with the general commercial, and also falls within the allowable, loop-compatible land area land uses. As it relates to the development standards, the applicant is proposing some deviations from the light industrial standards that are identified in the zoning ordinance. For example, they're asking for an increase in the height to 55 feet in lieu of 30 feet. They're asking to increase the floor area ratio to .5 in lieu to, in lieu to .3. They are proposing an increase into the landscaping where the zoning ordinance would require 5%. They are proposing 15%, as well, as well as with larger landscaping setbacks. The zoning ordinance requires 15 feet of landscaping buffer, and the applicant is proposing 20 feet along the front and the side of the property lines, as well as deviations from the parking requirements, as for an example, to allow parking dimensions to be 9 by 20 in lieu where the zoning ordinance requires 10 by 20. With those deviations, the applicant is projecting for a four warehouses totaling approximately 2.4 million square feet at the completion of the development. Here is a conceptual site plan. All access points would be identified along Dyce Art Road for a total of four, and at the midpoint access point, there would be a traffic signal. And with that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, noting that Planning Commission provided a recommendation for approval with stipulations. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none? Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Anyone needing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item number 30, ordinance 022-58?
Yes, sir. I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 022-58.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Clark, second. Councilmember Tomachoff, for the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 31, ordinance 022-59?
Ordinance number O 22-59, in ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 4.96 acres located at the northwest corner of North 91st Avenue and West Camelback Road, from A1 Agricultural to PAD Planned Area Development, for a development plan entitled NWC 91st Avenue and Camelback Road, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Public hearing is now open on item number 31, ordinance 022-59. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezoning application that's being presented before you, identified as the northwest corner of 91st and Camelback PAD. Request is to rezone from A1 Agricultural to PAD Planned Area Development for a property in the size of approximately five acres. Here is the vicinity map that depicts that the subject site is approximately four miles from City Hall. The general plan land use designation allows for planned commercial, and the applicant is proposing to rezone the property from A1 to PAD to be consistent with the general plan land use designation. Here's an area map. There's a high school identified to the north and to the east where the school fields are, and just... the school fields are, and just south of Camelback Road is Circle K. Here is the conceptual site plan that identifies two access points, one along 91st Avenue and the second one being along Camelback Road. As indicated, the applicant is proposing commercial land uses, and they currently have one end user for a childcare center. Within the development standards, once again, the land uses will fall underneath the C2 zoning district, and then there are minor deviations from the development standards, where they're asking for a minimum front building setback, as well as the minimum street side setback to go from 25 feet to 20 feet. The item was heard before planning commission. There were no speakers in opposition to the proposal. Planning commission gave a recommendation for approval with stipulations, and with that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from this council?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I did have one question. Our traffic engineers signed off on that 20-foot setback off of Camelback?
Mayor and council, yes, transportation, as well as all the other departments reviewed the application and found that the proposed reduction of setbacks are appropriate for the site.
Okay, and Mayor, if I could, the childcare center is gonna be further back. I wouldn't want to be 20 feet off of Camelback Road. The childcare center is gonna be the back part of the property?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? I do have one speaker card, and I said only if necessary. I don't think it's necessary, but it's up to you, Mr. Gilbert.
I don't think it's necessary either.
All right, very good. Okay, with that, public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item number 31, ordinance 022-59?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve item 31, ordinance number 22-59.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Hugh, a second, and Councilmember Clark to approve recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote? Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Let's go back to Councilmember Tomachoff, microphone on.
Oh, aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion does carry unanimous. Okay, it's my understanding that Ms. Perry will present both the resolution and the ordinance under number 32 at the same time while in the public hearing, although it will be a separate vote. Correct?
Yes.
Ms. Barer, would you introduce item 32?
Resolution number R-22-99, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona, by approving general plan amendment GPA 22-02 for property located at the northeast corner of Camelback Road and 99th Avenue. Ordinance number O-22-60, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at the northeast corner of Camelback Road and 99th Avenue from PAD to PAD Planned Area Development, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded. Public hearing.
Okay. Michael, does she need to go ahead and just read the ordinance too, or just keep that separate?
Mayor and council, either way, that's fine if you want to go ahead and read that.
Well, let's go ahead and read the other one.
I did. I read them both.
You got them both?
Yes.
Boy, you read quick.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Tabitha.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Once again, before you is a minor general plan amendment, as well as a rezoning application identified as cornerstone at Camelback PAD amendment. The request is...
Public hearing is now open on item 32. Now, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The general plan amendment is to change the land use designation from planned commercial to EMU, which is the entertainment mixed use, and then also to amend the existing PAD for a property at approximately 10 acres in size. Here's a vicinity map that depicts the subject property location, which is approximately five miles from City Hall. And the subject site is located at the northeast corner of 99th Avenue and Camelback Road. The general plan, once again, is changing the land use designation from PC, planned commercial, to EMU, the entertainment mixed use, to support the rezoning amendment to amend the existing PAD. Here's an area map to give context to the subject site and surrounding land uses. The request, a little more specific, is the applicant is proposing to add additional land uses, primary to allow for the multifamily land use. The other land uses, as it relates to residential, I'm sorry, retail and restaurant, is already allowed within the existing PAD. Within the proposal for the multifamily, the applicant is proposing 320 units, which comprises of approximately a density of 38 dwelling units to the acre. The applicant is also requesting some deviations to the development standards, as it relates to, as an example, would be the height. They're asking for an increase to 56 feet in height to accommodate the multifamily, which will comprise of three buildings at four stories. And then, as well as sign criteria standards, as it relates to the wall signs, they're basically asking for additional sign area. Here is the development standards that are being proposed. Once again, because the PAD did not have the multifamily as a permitted land use within the existing PAD, the applicant needed to create appropriate development standards for the multifamily, which also would apply to the retail as well. Here's an outline of the standards for the sign criterias that is specifically to the signage that would be on the walls of the buildings. Here's your conceptual site plan. First, I would like to identify what you see in circle now is already existing end users that's developed on the property as a whole. What is being proposed before you today constitutes what you see in the blue, which would be the multifamily proposal with the 320 units. In addition to that, on the ground level of the multifamily in these two areas, the applicant is proposing retail on the ground level. In addition to that, there's an opportunity for additional commercial end users. The item was heard before planning commission. There was no opposition at the planning commission public hearing. Planning commission recommended approval with stipulations, and with that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Hearing none? I don't have any speaker cards on this item, do I?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone needing to speak on this item? Seeing none? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 32, resolution R-22-99?
Yes, Mayor. We adopt resolution R-22-99.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Now, can we get a motion on item number 32, ordinance 022-60?
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt ordinance number O-22-60.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Okay, before I go on to item 33, I very quickly want to take a point of personal privilege and introduce, if you gentlemen would stand up in the back, please, Troop 526, Boy Scouts of America. Welcome. I can tell you that I have seen the face to the far left multiple times, so he's making sure that they're getting their badges for government, so good job. Welcome. Okay, with that, item 33, Ms. Barer, please.
Ordinance number O-22-61, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 34.06 acres located at the southwest corner of North 95th Avenue and West Missouri Avenue from PAD Planned Area Development to PAD Planned Area Development for a development plan entitled Urban 95 Luxury Living, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance is recorded.
Okay. I'm seeing a lot of you tonight. Public hearing is now open on item number 33, ordinance 022-61. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the last item under land development action. This is a rezoning application where the applicant is proposing to deviate from the existing PAD. The subject property is approximately 35, 34 acres in size. It is located at the southwest corner of 95th and Missouri Avenues, which is approximately five miles from City Hall. The land use designation in the general plan is depicted as EMU, the entertainment mixed use, and once again, the applicant is proposing to amend the existing PAD. Here is an area map, just to give context to the subject site and surrounding end users, as well as the Loop 101 to the west. Here is the existing PAD, just to give a little context to the existing PAD. The existing PAD allowed for a large amount of square footage for a commercial and retail, and then it also allowed for a maximum of 710 units for a multifamily. Based on the market trends, where we're seeing there's a great need for multifamily, part of the request for the amendment is to allow for additional multifamily units and lessen the square footage that is allowed for commercial end users. So before you is the site plan. Cardinals 95 is currently under construction, and the area that you see in green is what is being proposed today, in addition to an additional three acres that is identified in yellow that is being added to this PAD amendment. In summary, they're asking for three additional acres to be added into the PAD along the Loop 101. The land use allowance will be within the R2, R3, R4, R5, which primarily is to allow them to have the multifamily, as well as C1, C2, CO, and GO, which primarily allows for commercial and office end users. Once again, the applicant is opting to reduce the office and commercial land uses and expand from the allowance currently of 710 units to 1,500 units. Also, within the PAD, they're asking for the amendment to the development standards to allow for 15 stories at a maximum of 180 feet, and then two-story along 95th Avenue. Convenience uses will be allowed by right, and then the digital billboards will have to be in compliance with what our zoning ordinance allow for digital billboards. Just to show you additional development standards, where they're showing that the setbacks along Missouri is being proposed at 30 feet, where currently is zero feet, the increase in the building heights. And then also for the parking, they're asking for a deviation in the parking to reduce some of the parking requirements. This is to allow for a more urban dense development. Staff finding is that the proposal for the amendment is consistent with the general plan for the entertainment mixed use. The density will support the services and the transit that's in the area. It definitely adds additional housing variety to the area. There is existing infrastructure available, and then, once again, staff and the applicant found it important to limit to two stories alone 95th Avenue. The item was heard before planning commission on August the 25th. There was no opposition. Planning commission gave a recommendation of approval with stipulations, and with that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from our council? Hearing none. We have any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Is there anyone needing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 33, ordinance 022-61?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item number 33, ordinance number 022-61.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Melner, I think your microphone is off. How do you vote?
Do I get two votes? Aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you very well the first time. I just want to make sure you're recorded. Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Moving on to ordinances. Item number 35, ordinance 022-63.
Ordinance number O-22-63, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of an irrigation easement and a quitclaim deed in favor of Roosevelt Irrigation District for facilities located within and south of Ballpark Boulevard, west of 99th Avenue, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on item number 35 is Principal Engineer Jamie Chabon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. Currently, the Roosevelt Irrigation District has a canal that runs south of Ballpark Boulevard, within the city's right-of-way, and also adjacent to property that we own, south of Ballpark Boulevard. So in conjunction with Phase Two of the Ballpark Boulevard improvements, the city will be tiling the canal. And so, and this is very important, because right now, there's no way to get access over the canal to the property to the south. So once the irrigation canal is tiled, that will facilitate access for future development on the south side of Ballpark Boulevard. So Roosevelt Irrigation District is requesting an easement and a small parcel of land from the city to protect those facilities, give them access so that they may operate and maintain the facilities in the future. Staff is recommending approval of the easement and the land grant. And thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none? Can I get a motion on item 35, ordinance 022-63?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 35.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. New business. Ms. Barer, would you introduce item 36?
A public hearing of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, regarding the adoption of transportation development impact fees.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Engineering Budget and CIP Administrator John Murphy. Hi, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here tonight to provide some background for the public hearing on the adoption of the...
Sure, hold on one second, okay? Public hearing is now open on item 36. Go ahead.
All right. I'm here tonight to provide some background for the public hearing on the adoption of the transportation development impact fees. As you know, this is a long process. It takes approximately nine months, so when Don told me this was my baby, I didn't know if he was speaking literally or figuratively. But you last saw this item on August 26th. It was a regular meeting, at which time you adopted the infrastructure improvement plan and land use assumptions. They provided the basis for the fee calculation. You're gonna next see this item at your October 25th meeting, where you will consider voting on the fees. And that's, I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions? Hearing none. Any speaker cards? Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Is there anyone needing to speak on this item? Public hearing is now closed. Council comments and suggestions, we'll start off with councilmember Clark tonight.
No comments tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
None, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Just to remind residents of the Sunset Park area, that we'll be having a district neighborhood meeting to discuss the upcoming discussion about the water feature that is going to be planned for the park. And that's going to be this Thursday at 5:30 PM at the park.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge something that really, just incredible, that happened yesterday. I'm sure we all saw, at least a video after it happened, was NASA had a DART spacecraft and literally flew that thing at 14,000 miles per hour and to knock that thing off the orbiter. They're hoping that that's what it did. But it was just a reminder to me that what kind of incredible things people can do when they work together. So hopefully, that resonates with some people, maybe, hopefully. But humans are capable of just about anything when we work together. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Can't top that, mayor. Nothing tonight.
Vice mayor?
Yeah, just want to announce that live at Murphy Park, October 2022 is beginning, Saturday, October 1st at 7:00 PM. Come visit us, some free music, some food, drinks, and come and visit all your restaurants. Thank you.
All right, and I just want to share at this time, the incredible turnout that we had for our ninth annual Stand Up for Veterans on Saturday. Every year we do this event, I'm impressed more and more by the amount of people that really have, and it might be a little strong to say, have fallen in love with this event that we do, helping our veterans and our families. We get a lot of staff that show up that are volunteering time, and more veteran service organizations than you can imagine. I think we had, I think last count I heard, was 70-something veteran service organizations, along with nearly 50 employers that were there specifically to hire a veteran, to make a difference in somebody's life. And, you know, I always tell people, can you imagine being a veteran out of work and calling your spouse up and saying, "Don't worry about Christmas, I got a job today." I mean, that's pretty powerful. It really is. And our court systems, not just ours, but all the folks across the valley that participate in that. It really is a neat event. We're so blessed to have the opportunity and the support of everybody included. So I just want to thank everybody that participated in that. Next year will be the Big Ten, so we'll try to make it even better. So with that, I want to thank everyone again. We're going to move on to our citizens' comments. Next on the agenda is just that council makes the opportunity available to our citizens to bring information and business before this council that's not on the printed agenda. I have some speaker cards here. Folks, I'd like to remind you, as I call you up, you need to state your name. If you live in Glendale, I don't want your address, I just need to know your district you live in. If you don't know it, then give us your crossroads. With that said, if you don't live in Glendale, tell us the city you're from, and you'll have three minutes to speak. So with that said, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll start off with Mary Parrott, and then following Mary is going to be Josh Medica. I hope I pronounced that right. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Mary Parrott, 67th Avenue and Greenway.
Perfect.
The Granada Estates. And lately, we've been bombarded with code violations, okay? Some are necessary, some are not. My concern tonight, I would like to ask if there's a way that we can put more rules on how you can actually complain or turn somebody in for a violation. I think that it's way too easy for somebody to just call up and be anonymous and call and complain about something in somebody's yard that they don't like. I've actually sent in, and I hope that you guys have seen it, read it, the comments that were, to me, on a social media site that is meant to bring the neighborhood together and meant to bring us together to protect each other, to know each other, and for the good reasons, not for what you guys could see as what I presented you. That is, it's wrong. It's scary to have that said to you. I'd like to know who this person is that did this, but I don't know. And she's able to bring a lot of unnecessary complaints that you guys are bombarded with, Glendale PD's bombarded with. We have been very bombarded with these things. We're the ones that are dealing with the violations every day, having cops called on us. And it's this one person that is doing this, and that's how she's speaking to people. And this is out of pure meanness and wrong. It's, that is so wrong. What you guys have read there is wrong for her to do that and use you guys as her backup and her power, that she has the power to do this to the residents. And she doesn't even live in our area. She lives outside of our area. We need to do something to make it harder for people to complain. Not impossible, but make it a little more work for them to be able to complain on somebody. Why is it affecting them? How is it affecting them? What, you know, what's their reasoning for bringing you guys out to check this code violation? Something like that, a little bit more than just a phone call. And I'd like to see that done. If you guys can think about doing that, that would be awesome. It would help a little bit. I was going to be here on myself and my own complaints about violations, but I'm not going to do that. I'm actually standing for the residents, because this is a bigger problem. And somehow, she needs to be stopped by doing this to us. Not that we don't want to be code compliant, because we do, and we will, we are trying. And she just needs to be stopped. This is wrong, what she's doing to us and how she's doing it to Glendale PD. They have to be called out, I mean, numerous times. I don't, I don't know what more to say.
Thank you. Josh, you're up. And after Josh, if Steve, Wolfste will be ready to go. I'd appreciate it. Again, if you know the district you live in, just state your district, if not, your crossroads and your name.
My name is Josh Monica. I'm from Granada Estates.
Hold the microphone closer to your mouth.
My name is Josh Monica from Granada Estates, and I wanted to talk about pretty much the same issue that she had. You guys have done an amazing job cleaning up Granada Estates, getting rid of most of the problems, but we still have a really big problem. This one person is abusing code, and she's targeting victims. She's harassing, stalking people. I've caught her on my cameras multiple times. She'd drive full speed down the street, right past a bunch of violations, stop in front of whoever she wants to pick on. She'll take pictures, and then she speeds off, ignoring the other code violations. Then she makes YouTube videos where she puts people's houses online, making fun of them, laughing at them. Her most recent comment on the Nextdoor app about one of these meetings is she says, "Roll the video to 2910, get a box of tissue. The second speaker will bring tears to your eyes. Code cited them, and it's hilarious." She gets off on, she thinks it's funny when people get code violations. And I think anyone who thinks it's hilarious to get someone cited and reported shouldn't be allowed to. I mean, she's literally going around and harassing and targeting just certain people, ignoring all the other ones. I can have my neighbor right across the street have a bunch of violations, she doesn't report it. She decides to pick on me or other people down the street, and it's been very annoying. Because every time, I always get up to code, I don't get tickets, and I've been advised by code enforcers, cops. She'll call the cops. If I pull up in front of my house, just for a second, till I maybe vacuum my truck out or take the groceries out, she's always patrolling. She'll call the code, and then they come by and they're like, "I'm sorry, we have to come by here again." And I'm like, "I just parked it here for a second." And she, another thing she does is, she looks up people square footed of their house and counts how many vehicles they have. She knew exactly the square footage of my house, and I think it's crazy that you can only have one vehicle per 400 square feet. Because she goes around, looks up the square footage, counts the vehicles, and she takes pictures, and she has a YouTube channel where she posts everyone's houses online. And it seems crazy, if someone has a 798-square-foot trailer, husband and wife has a 16-year-old kid, all three of them have to share the same vehicle, because they're only allowed one vehicle. The only way to get up to code is to park the vehicle on the side of the street, which is, it's more dangerous, because now a car could crash into it. And we don't want to park our cars on the side of the street where people can break in and everything. And we all feel like we're just getting bullied by one person, and it's not me, it's a bunch of people. And I know you guys know who she is. I know her real name. And you guys don't work for her. She's not your boss, she's not my boss. I mean, this is here for the common good of the people in this city.
If you'll wrap it up.
Okay. I mean, you guys, the power needs to go back to the people, you guys, code enforcers, the police. So we're all united as a, like, community, working toward the common goal of the people. And this one person shouldn't be the boss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From Watel? Okay. Warren, Mr. Wolfong, you know the drill, sir.
Good evening, council. Warren Wolfong, Arcatilla District. I'm going to do this again, because there's like hundreds of these. Unfortunately, we have to get stuck on one. So I'm going to give you a history on one problem from one whole year. September 16th, my inspector on the property we've been talking about observed the violation. It should have ended there. It didn't. One and a half weeks later, off the public record, I discussed with my case with my supervisor, Jim Trammell, and the code official Tim Bowling. It was confirmed that the circular driveway is allowed and vehicles can park on it. That started the mess. From now on, from that point on, in October, the property that it was inspected was recently in, recently, the same allegations of previous violations were corrected. The circle driveway is legal for vehicles to park on. Another open case on this would point, at this point, is harassment. This is what they do when they don't want you to complain. They use terms like that to try to keep you from complaining. Again, in November, same thing, harassment. They're saying, "I'm harassing, trying to fix a violation." That's not right. We go into January 13th, the circle driveway is permitted. This allegation's been investigated. The case is closed. We go into February. They quote one of the codes out of chapter 24. "A driveway parking or maneuvering area within a front yard shall be prohibited from being located in front of a living space dwelling except provided for access of a permitted garage carport to be allowed for a semi, or placement of a semicircle driveway." But it doesn't say it permitted, it just says "allowed for a circle driveway." And if you look in the picture, the property with the violation and the picture, and the property across the street, the property across the street is the way that code was supposed to be allowed. The one across the street, that is the violation, that is what's causing the problem. And then we get into June, no violations found. And then, when they discovered that there was another property going up, being enforced, which I exposed last council meeting, all of a sudden, on August 11th, waiting more information for supervisor on this violation. What is there to be waiting for? It is a violation. I've waited a year to get this corrected. So the other piece I want to share, give you a little bit of time here, okay?
I'm going to give you about another 10 seconds.
Okay. The code committee, together with the consultant, it allows, it shows you the percentages of parking that is allowed. This stuff was available for Tim Bowling and Rick St. John, they did not use it. This is something that needs to be brought into the current code as it should be.
All right, thank you.
As a special interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there being no further business before the council tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending. Mayor Osborne, city manager, hope you learned something. All right, very good. There are no objections from this council. This meeting is adjourned.